...fourteen, First Order Business's roll call and determination of quorum. Charlene.
Estes, Peterson, Lewis, Doyle, Wright, Scott, Nordstrom, Roberts, Clayton, Lorente. We have quorum.
We will now recognize Pastor John Britt from First United Methodist Church for our invocation. You're welcome to participate, but not required. Good evening Pastor.
The Mayor and the council, thank you for the opportunity to be here to bless this meeting and those gathered here. Let's pray. Dear Lord God, we thank you for the Mayor and the council members, for their time, their service, and their love of our community. We also thank you for all else gathered here tonight to share their input in tonight's proceedings. We ask for your blessings upon those procedures, those discussions, those decisions made tonight. May you guide all those to be made in the best interests of our community. I ask that you would also fill each year with the spirit of love and peace, and that you would allow them to show respect for one another as they discuss and make decisions. In closing, Lord, we thank you for our country, for our independence, for our freedoms that we have, for the soldiers that protect and bless and serve us each day. We ask you to continue to keep your hands upon them. And we also lift up the officers and the firefighters and all in our community who protect and serve and heal us each day. We ask for your continued blessings upon them. Pray all this in the name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now of our two outgoing city council members, Bill Clayton and Bonnie Peterson, We want to take a moment tonight to thank our two outgoing city council members, Bill Clayton from Ward One and Bonnie Peterson from Ward Five, for their service to our community. And we appreciate the work they've done the last two and four years respectively, and we wish them all the best in their future endeavors. And I have, on behalf of a grateful community, sorry I'm getting fingerprints on it, yeah, a plaque, and I'll read it. It says, "Presented in recognition of outstanding services, service to the citizens of Rapid City, Bill Clayton, Ward One Alderman, Rapid City Council, 2012 to 2014." And I also have one for Bonnie Peterson, Ward Five Alderwoman, Rapid City Common Council, We realized something after we ordered the plaque. If you look at Bonnie's, we failed. We usually on the plaques we put if they were council, in council leadership or council president. So we forgot to do that with Bonnie. So we needed to right a wrong. So what we did is we went back and we ordered a, another one. And this is a little statue. And it says Bonnie Peterson, City Council President, 2012, 2013. We didn't have time to order one with a B on it, but this is for you.
I want to thank the Mayor, and also the council members that I've served with for my four-year term. And I just want to encourage you to run for office. And if you're not going to run for office, at least vote, because voting really does count. And I would just say that I have more confidence in our government now than I did four years ago when I came here. We have wonderful staff, really all our department heads are the ones that really run this city. And they really, and their staff, and they really deserve a lot of kudos, much more than we do, because they're here day in and day out. And I would say there's nothing much sinister going on behind these walls. And I have, like I said, I have a lot more confidence in our government now than I did four years ago, and I think that's a wonderful experience to have. So thank you very much.
I'd like to echo Bonnie's remarks about our city staff and our leadership on the city staff. I've been amazed as I've come to know them and watched them work. And as she said, they're the people behind the scenes really making this city go. For two years, I've tried to encourage as many people as I could to be involved in their city government. There's no secrets here, but what we do here, week in, week out, month in, month out, affects each one of you in your daily lives. And it bothers me, as somebody who spent a long, long time in a military uniform, and then decided to give back to the city I love so much by serving, it just bothers me to see people hanging on the strap in the trolley car, going wherever it goes. Each of you has a voice, and you have an opportunity to exercise that voice and hold each of us here accountable to serve you in the best way possible. So I would encourage, for those of you who are watching on TV, and I'm amazed at how many people come up to me and say, "Oh, I saw you on TV. I thought nobody watched that channel." But people do. And I would encourage you, come here, see what goes on, get to know your council people, and the Mayor, and the city staff, because there's far more than what you get to read in the newspaper, because it's always the abridged version. So be involved with your city, take pride in your home, and give back as much as you can. It's been a real honor to serve for two years, and Jerry congratulated me on my retirement. Retirement sounds like you're going out to pasture, and I guess I'm old enough, but I'll probably be back, because it's just a part of me to give. I thank you for your support for two years, and again, I encourage you to be involved.
We have a rule here to never give a microphone to a politician. I just want to emphasize what both Bonnie and Bill have said. This community is in the hands of ten people that you elect. They represent you. That's part of the democratic federal republic that we belong to. And they have an awesome responsibility, they have an awesome job to do, they need your involvement. And there's an article in the American Legion Magazine this month talking about the impatient electorate. We should come to where we become more patient with our process, become more involved, and be more part of the problem, and contribute, as they both have said. If there's someone out there, especially young people, someday you want to think about serving your government in some way, get involved, get studied up, understand the issues, and productively contribute to your community. It's been a pleasure working with you.
We will now go into declare recess to swearing our new elected city council members. So if all the five council members of this class would come up, and Pauline Sumption will do the oath. We are now in recess. And right after this, we'll have cookies for a few minutes in the caucus room. You're welcome to join. We've ordered several dozens, so we should have enough for some of you. And you're welcome to join us, and then we'll start the meeting right after that.
Welcome buddy. Good to see you. Which is going to be like this.
I, Steve Lorente, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation, or for the purpose of evasion, that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office of Alderman, Ward Two Alderman, Rapid City Council, Rapid City, South Dakota, according to the law, and to the best of my ability. So help me God.
If everyone could please take their seats. We are now reconvened, and we are out of recess. We will now proceed with the adoption of tonight's agenda. We do have one, we do have one change so far. Item forty-four, I'd like to make a slight amendment to it. Item forty-four currently reads, "Approve Resolution 2014-64, Resolution Establishing Fees to Be Charged in 2014 for Various Licenses, Permits, and Applications." We'd like to add to that language. It is also the intent of the council, this is approved, to approve waiving the fee for the appeal of determination by building official at 4745 Mandalay Lane, which is a specific appeal that's currently affected by the resolution, but the resolution doesn't go into effect for twenty days beyond the date of publication, so that needs to be included in tonight's motion. We have a motion by Jerry Wright, and a second by Amanda Scott, to approve the agenda with the one amendment, item forty-four. Were there any other changes or additions to tonight's agenda that we missed? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are now on to a general public comment. We will first go to, we have a couple of general public comment items. We'll first go to Rick Brooks, who would like to speak to us about the Fourth of July. Step up to the microphone, sir, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. It's indeed an honor to be in your company, you all. I can't tell you how stoked I am right now. My mission here tonight is to talk about the Fourth of July. And bear with me, because I have a lot to say in a little bit of time, so you have to pick it apart. After George Washington died, he left behind a letter which mentioned our absolute freedom and independence as a nation. That was in a letter written, he left behind, and then he passed on. Just something I picked up the other night on TV, KOTA. What a better way to celebrate the Fourth of July than to honor our military and fallen heroes. To that, I say amen. I'm saying um a lot, because I'm going to my notes. I swore I wasn't going to do it this way. As a proud city, I suggest that this central tourist mecca, with forty-two presidents on many of our downtown corners, and also gateway to the shrine of democracy, and then other local attractions include in this area, the rapid ride presidential routes. New founding Fathers Complex is something new that's out there on Highway sixteen, includes the Liberty Bell, reproduction, Presidents of Wax, Ezeam, and Keystone, Presidents Information Center in downtown Rapid City. I say, I just got to make this one point for sure, and then I'm going to see how much I can get in. I appeal to all you great, fabulous people. I appeal the city council to them to reverse their decision and cancel their course to stop our Independence Day fireworks. This move was wrong. It all comes down to this. Which choice does the city of presidents make to celebrate our freedom, and our democracy, and our independence, or New Year's Eve? It's a no-brainer, you guys. It's a no-brainer. You celebrate with the biggest celebration in West River, South Dakota, if not all South Dakota, and this area. I could go on. I mean, for over forty years, my family and descendants, grandparents of my wives, and everything, we went to one spot. And then that spot kept getting more and more cars from family and friends. Now, all we have for a choice is, of course, to hit the outskirts all around little bitty piddly celebrations, in comparison to DC for say, or New York. Of course, we're not a million people, but we ought to have the biggest celebration for our visiting people, our tourists, our veterans, all those amongst you that are veterans, for you. And for all of you that have lost loved ones, for you. I just appeal to that. I mean, I could go on talking, I have a whole bunch of things to say, but it comes down to the very basics. And it was in our prayer tonight. Just think of what you heard.
Rick, if you could wrap up your comments, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that about it?
It is.
Thank you for your time. Love you all.
We will now go to Jim Galvin, also under general public comment. Topic is Big Sky Development.
Well, that answers that question. Okay, folks, I originally had none planned to come down here, and this, a friend of mine asked me to ask you. Up there at the Big Sky, has the city council and the developer, A, number one, come to an agreement on repairing those blasted streets up there? Because I'll tell you right now, I was up there a couple of days ago. Some of those streets have got holes in them the size kids could use for foxholes. Other parts of those streets are like a roller coaster. The other day, I almost avoided getting myself a tire damage. Now, has the city and the developer done something I can take back to my friend and say, "They're going to get those streets fixed"? Or do I tell him, "Here we go again, they're going to be ignored"? What's the story?
Jim, let me do this, since this is, this is public comment, and we don't, we don't want to get into a back and forth during public comment. But what we can, what I'll do is, is I'll say this, that the answer to the first part of your question is, is there an agreement between the developer and the city? The answer is no. But the, but the other part of it is, is that the city is proceeding with fixing the part of the streets that is in the city limits, and our Public Works Department can provide you additional information on that later, or if the council wants to add this to the agenda, we can get a, we can get a brief, a brief update.
I just want an answer to give those friends of mine up there, because winter is coming again. So.
Terry, would you, I'd like to ask our Public Works Director, Terry, would you mind me Mr. Galvin out in the hallway and giving him an update?
Yes, I will. I'll head around that way, because I want to talk about something else later. I see there's an empty chair there. Young man, come and get this thing.
All right, we do not have any additional general public comment items. Have I missed anyone? It's on general public comment. Public comment is, general public comment is now closed. We will now proceed with the annual process of election of officers. We'll proceed first with the election of council vice, or I'm sorry, council president. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? I'm sorry, I meant nominations. A motion to nominate requires a motion and a second.
I'm here.
A nomination required. We'll first go to Chad Lewis.
Make a motion to nominate Jerry Rice, Jerry Rice. I like the forty-niners.
We have a second.
I like to nominate Jerry Wright.
A second by Amanda Scott. Are there any further nominations? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve Jerry Wright as city council president?
Do we have to vote?
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
All right, and we'll now proceed with the election of council vice president. Do we have nominations? We'll go to Chad Lewis.
Make a motion to nominate Brad Estes for vice president.
And we have a second by John Roberts, to nominate Brad Estes to be our city council vice president. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. I hope I didn't deny anybody the opportunity for additional motions, but there weren't any, so you're elected. Congratulations. All right. So let's just take a, take a moment and change seats. Public comment is now open on items three through sixty-five. Do not have any speaker request forms on items three through sixty-five. Have I missed anyone? Public comment is now closed for items three through sixty-five. We are on consent, items three through sixty-five, any council members, staff like to remove any of these items for separate consideration? Seeing none. Do we have, okay, we have a motion by Nordstrom, and a second by Lewis, to approve items three through sixty-five. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are now on public comment for items sixty-six through sixty-eight. And we will proceed first with public comment on item number sixty-six. And this is a request by John Chris McDowell to authorize an amendment to zoning ordinance to allow for hobby beekeeping in residential districts. And we have thirteen speaker request forms, and I don't want anybody to be stung by the limit, but it's a time limit of three minutes. And we'll proceed first with Tom Allen on item sixty-six, and Jerry Owens, you'll be up after Tom. So Tom Allen, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Tom Allen, and I'm president of the wannabe hobby beekeepers here in Rapid City, South Dakota. A little history, there are only half as many bees in this country as there were back in nineteen forty-five, and that's due to a lot of different reasons. Our change in agriculture, along with the use of pesticides. Additionally, beekeepers nationally have been losing approximately one-third of their colonies every winter for the last several years, since '06. Things are getting dire for bees. And we require thirty, bees for pollination, about thirty percent of what we have in our dinner table. So we, we need them. Unfortunately, bees have gotten a bad rap. Approximately ninety-plus percent of the people who get stung by bee are actually stung by yellow jackets, hornets, and wasps. Those rascals can sting more than once. Honeybees sting only once, because they die afterwards. And it's, it's interesting that honeybees defend, whereas the other rascals are attackers. Honeybees can do a lot for us. They live in harmony in many of our larger cities in this country, San Francisco, New York City, in Salt Lake City, Milwaukee, a number of large cities. And of course, there is a colony bees on the White House lawn. So, you know, they're there, and they live with us in harmony. I find it discouraging that Rapid City, in a state that ranks number five, in the top fifth, of the honey producers in this country, does not encourage sustainable, environmentally friendly practices, backyard beekeeping. If neighbors find that bees become nuisance, they have recourse. They have the same recourse as if my dog keeps barking all day long, they can report it, and it's solved. But we don't need to have a resolution that totally outlaws the keeping of dogs. We don't need an ordinance that outlaws the keeping of bees in the city of Rapid, Rapid If a colony becomes a nuisance, then government can step in, but we don't need to simply outlaw or ban bees in the city. Allow for solutions to problems. I ask that the council decide to change or implement code to allow and encourage beekeeping in the city of Rapid City. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Jerry Owens. And after Jerry, we'll then go to Gene Obstedall.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jerry Owens. I own a company called ADR Bees. I own a company called ADR Bees, which promotes the beekeeping of hobby bees. I'm located here in Rapid City. I've been doing this for the last ten years. Got my first hive of bees, uh, from a guy that lived out on Sheridan Lake Road, inside the city limits when I moved here in two thousand and three. He had been keeping bees here for a long time. He told me there wasn't any ordinance. I called the city, they told me there wasn't anything. The item that has been, uh, brought forth, I guess probably was a little obscure so they couldn't, we couldn't find it readily. Anyway, in the ten years that I've been with the bees and the people that keep bees, I've only heard of one incident where it became a major problem, or significant problem. And that's the one that brought this to our attention. I was here last Wednesday and, uh, the gentleman was here that, and, and had some pictures and, and some comments on what had happened and, uh, he was very well within his rights to have, uh, a concern. Unfortunately, instead of taking it to the beekeeper so that they could take care of it and get it out of the way, uh, it has evolved to this meeting here tonight. I'd like to line out some items for consideration. I'm going to repeat a couple things that Tom Allen has said because they're extremely important. I don't want, I don't have his piece of paper here, so I'm not going to quote him verbatim for everything, but, uh, population worldwide for honeybees is in dangerous decline and has been for a long time. And, uh, if we lose our honeybees, we lose a big, a big portion of the food that we have. The federal government recognized the needs to preserve and promote bee populations. They just passed legislation to give incentives to those who plant crops that attract and feed the honeybees. They'll actually pay the farmers to put, uh, flowers down in the hedgerows and, uh, between fields in order to draw the honeybees in for the population. Bees are not known to be aggressive towards humans. When they sting, they die. A bee, and I can say this from countless encounters with the bees, is that if you reach out and touch one, it's going to sting you. If you go into their hive and disrupt their home, they're going to sting you. And I would do the same thing if you did that to me. A lot of the, uh, information on being allergic to bees, uh, people that get stung with a bee and they get a little pop-up on their arm or something, or a little swelling in their face, uh, those aren't serious allergies. Those are reactions from the poison and the stinger and it goes away quite rapidly, usually within a couple, three days, it'll itch a little bit, but there's nothing there. If you run short of breath, get to a hospital because you are one of the one percent of the people in this country that are super allergic to bees and you need to take care of that situation right away. But it's very, very few people are super allergic to bees.
Jerry, if you could wrap up your comments, please.
Okay. I think that a resolution between the city and hobby beekeeping should be that let us take care of the bee problem. If you have a problem with bees, call me. I'm in a paper, I'm in the, or in the Yellow Pages, I'm in the phone book. Call me, I'll come take care, or I will call one of our beekeepers and they'll come and take care of the bee problem. Last Wednesday, one more second, please. Last Wednesday, after I got out of this meeting here with the finance committee, two hours later, I got a telephone call from over Casey and Peterson's. They had a swarm on their awning. I drove over there, I took the swarm down, I put it in a box, it now rests in a beehive up by Nemo. That's what us beekeepers do. We look after our bees. Thank you.
And Gene, you're up next. Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to talk to you. My name is Gene Obstedall. I am a hobby beekeeper. I became interested in the hobby two years ago when the news had become evident that the bee population was declining significantly. I think in my own small way, I can be of help. Since I started my hobby, I have talked with friends and neighbors about the bees. The more they learn about the bees, the less they are concerned about getting stung and more interested in learning the benefits of the bees. In fact, Saturday, we had a family reunion in our backyard and the hive was the focal point of attention. The bees were coming and going, uh, from the hive and they were going out for food and bringing back in food for the hive. The children loved watching them and had questions about stinging insects and other good questions. They learned some things about the world they live in and not one was stung by a bee. Bees are all around us and will build their hives anywhere, attics, trees, crawl spaces. At least I know where my bees are. This year, we will get our first crop of honey and everyone is waiting for their free jar. I am president of the Board of Directors for the Canyon Lake Senior Center where the wannabe Bee Club meets monthly. There is a beehive in Mary Hall Park and it's close to the center. The center gardeners and the Rapid City Garden Club members are in the gardens every day and enjoy the benefits of the bees and their pollinating. The bees are docile and very beneficial to our environment. Please allow us to continue being hobby beekeepers. Thank you.
We'll now go to Christine McDowell. Christine McDowell. And after Christine McDowell will be Charlie Wheeler. So Charlie, if you want to get ready.
My name is Chris McDowell and I live at twenty-four oh-one Judy Avenue. I'm here tonight in favor of the hobby of honeybeekeeping in Rapid City, but I didn't always feel this way. I was not very excited when my husband, John, started talking about getting a hive of honeybees and I was still apprehensive and fearful when Jerry Owens showed up and installed a hive in our backyard about five years ago. I watched from a distance and I wondered if the grandkids could still play in the backyard, if we could relax on our deck, and what about our pets? As time went by, I watched John work with the honeybees and I asked questions and I tried to learn about them. He seemed like he was really enjoying his new hobby. Was I missing out on something? I gradually became comfortable with our backyard companions. I even started pulling up a lawn chair to watch them work and every time I did that, I put the lawn chair closer to the hive. Then John bought me a bee suit for my birthday so I could help when he opened up hives for inspection or extracted honey. That's when I discovered the fascinating world of bees. The honeybee can get a bad rap from its cousins, the wasps, yellow jackets, and hornets, and I found out I had been very uneducated about honeybees. I took a three-day master beekeepers workshop with John at the University of Nebraska in Lincoln and I learned so much. I even helped John capture a swarm of bees on Alta Vista Drive, Fourth of July evening. We had plans that evening but dropped everything to go and help this couple. I did a complete turnabout in my thinking about honeybees and think most of you who are unsure at this time would do the same thing if you got to know the honeybee too. I invite anyone interested in visiting our backyard bees to give us a call and we will try to answer any of your questions. I'm sure any other beekeeper would offer to do the same. I would also like to thank all the people, including neighbors, that have contacted us and shown their support. I even had our local mail carrier stop today and to say that she wanted us to know she was in favor of the bees. She has been a mail carrier in our neighborhood for almost twelve years and has never seen any more bee activity in our neighborhood than anywhere else. In closing, I hope that the council can come up with a way to keep the honeybees in the city because of all the good they do for Rapid City and mankind. Plus, John has started talking about getting pigeons if he can't have his bees. And I know both of me here and I don't care much for pigeons.
You just had to play that card, didn't you? We go to Charlie Wheeler.
That's going to be a tough act to follow, I think. Uh, I, I don't live in the city, uh, I live in Meade County, but I just wanted to come and express my support in, in the hopes that you will come to a workable solution, uh, to keep bees within the city. And I was out working in my bees, uh, this afternoon and I was thinking about this meeting and it dawned on me while I was working with them that it, it takes a lot of work, but the people that you see over here that have come in support, uh, they're caring and considerate people. They want to come to a solution that is workable for all parties. And I don't know if you know or not, but there are quite a few people that, uh, want local honey and that purposely seek out local honey for their allergies, um, because it gives them some relief because of the pollen that the bees carry in. And if we get rid of the bees that are within the city, you're going to have people within the city that won't be getting that local pollen that will, that will help in that situation. So I don't want to go over my three minutes, but again, I just hope that, uh, all of you would work towards a workable solution, uh, that we can have bees within the city and be able to keep them and make sure that everyone is on the same page. Thank you.
We'll now go to John McDowell. John McDowell. And after John, we will have Presley Crowe.
Uh, my name is John McDowell, I live on Judy Avenue and, uh, here tonight to, uh, ask the council to either amend the current, uh, code, the way it's written, with, uh, changing of the definition of one word if I've, if that makes sense for the way to go, or to allow for the opportunity of, uh, starting from scratch to develop our own, uh, ordinance for the possibility of backyard honeybeekeeping. So that, that's why I'm here. We've, uh, got a lot of other speakers here and a lot of support and I sure appreciate all of them for what they've done. And, uh, rather than be repetitive as to what may be said after me or before me, uh, I'm going to keep my remarks brief, but, um, I believe all of you have a copy of the letter that I sent and the supporting documents. And I just wanted to spend just a few seconds on this. On, on page two, the, uh, the letter from Andy, the code enforcement officer, I should have highlighted, uh, he said, right in the middle of it, I've had this issue question come up in the past, but I'm not aware of or have come across any regulations for or against beekeeping. So this, it's been a cloudy, uh, issue for a long time and I think this is, you know, really a chance for all of us to take a look at, uh, at how we move forward from here. I also, uh, kind of focused in on the word crop. I guess in, in my thought, uh, crop, uh, as is expressed in, uh, the Merriam-Webster dictionary, I, uh, highlighted what I was trying to shoot for here and, uh, the full definition of crop under number two, a plant or animal, uh, or animal product that can be grown or harvested extensively for profit, profit or substance. And I fully believe that honey crop fits in this definition. I, I don't think it's out of line to view it in that way. So that was my point for, uh, uh, bringing that as part of my letter. And the honey crops and markets on the next page, I probably should have highlighted that, again, uh, putting more credibility to the, to the definition. Same way back in nineteen thirty-six, the USDA, uh, subject honey crop is just, uh, more of the same. So, um, that's what that's all about. And then, uh, looking at the code seventeen-ten-oh-two, permitted principal and accessory uses. And, uh, we go back to item F where agricultural crops, uh, not to be sold are allowed. Clearly, the, uh, permission for you to have a garden, uh, to raise a garden crop or hopefully to have honeybees and have a honeybee crop, uh, in a non-commercial way. And that's what we're really after here. I see the, the lights going off, time goes by oh-so fast, but, uh, uh, we did drop everything Friday night, uh, July the fourth, when you were all out with your families and, and at your picnics and, uh, drinking, uh, cold beverages and, uh, watching the fireworks. The Humane Society wasn't around to help these people. They're all off that day, of course, and, and that's fine. So we were, this lady called us, Jerry, you weren't home to go get that swarm. And so we, uh, we dropped everything and went over there. We spent two hours with them. We did, uh, get the swarm safely. I left in such a hurry, I didn't even have shoes on, I had sandals, so here I am fumbling around out there catching this swarm with, uh, with just sandals on and we got along fine. It was, it was wonderful, but again, we're just asking for either clarification of the definitions or the opportunity for a new ordinance. Thank you.
Now go to Presley Crowe. Presley Crowe.
Hi, many of you know me as Chicken Lady. Um, I am a member of Rapid City Hens and I'm here to support the beekeepers of Rapid City. Um, for me, the biggest issue with this is I don't like being told what I can and cannot have on my own property. And I'd like to remind the council that when voting on issues of importance to the city, that you are public servants and not paid masters. So your job is to make an educated vote and not an emotional one. And I'm twenty-two years old and I've called this my home. And if you continue to block sustainable practices and make them illegal, then I will be forced either into civil disobedience in terms of beekeeping and our backyard chickens or I'll be forced to look elsewhere where they, um, encourage and promote the use of sustainable practices. I'm really disappointed that this is even an issue in an agricultural community. You know, I really expected a lot more when I moved back from places like San Francisco and DC, um, that are, you know, very more liberal and all about control. To move to a city that claims to be conservative and all about the people and smaller government and they're telling me I can't have chickens and I can't have bees. And so I really have an issue with that and I will be back all the time because I know you love seeing us chicken people every week. So, um, I hope to continue this conversation and I hope that you make educated votes and you allow these people to keep their bees. Thank you.
We'll now go to Mel Glover. Mel?
Thank you very much. The main reason I'm here, you guys, is I'm a Pennington County Master Gardener and in my backyard, I have five apple trees, three plum trees, two pear trees, oop, one pear tree, I lost it in October. And we need the bees. If we don't have bees and all of the different pollinators, we're in big trouble. All of my gardens need the bees. This weekend, I was out there rearranging one of my wife's flower beds, nose-to-nose with honeybees, didn't bother me a bit. Never been stung in forty years in that one place and it's just down the street from John. My wife got stung once, but it was her fault. She stepped on a wasp in the garden. And when you get stung, you don't know if it's a bee, a honeybee, a wasp, a hornet, a yellow jacket. And the good guys get blamed for all the bad things. So, we need to have bees, we need the support of all of these pollinators, all different kinds. My wife and many people plant lots of flowers to attract them. And, uh, I had all kinds of things that I wanted to say. One other thing, and this may not be the place, but I'm going to mention it anyway, the word on the street in my neighborhood was it, there was a vindictive mode, reason for getting after John and Chris. Because a gentleman had been parking his trailer on the street, it was a large trailer and there was no place for people to park. And Chris parked in that spot one time and got in trouble and a few days later, there was a knock on the door. So, thank you very much.
We will now go to Tina Malali. Saw her earlier. There she is. Good evening.
Good evening, um, I'm Tina Malali. I'm, uh, uh, running for West Dakota Water Development District Director. To know that, um, water is, is, is important as bees, but I want to say that it is an honor to participate in this governmental process. Uh, a lot of people don't and it's sad that they don't, but I wanted to bring to your attention about the ordinance that we have. In reading it, um, I don't see the problem that we have, uh, that John had mentioned in seventeen-ten on the- the low-density residential. There are so many communities all over the world that participate in beekeeping, and these are major cities. We're talking London, Minneapolis, New York City, they have them on the buildings, bees, Sydney, Australia, Salt Lake City, they have an ordinance there that says that less than one-half acre, you can have five honeybees, hives. And you're not allowing one inside the city limits here, according to the problem that we're having. According to the USDA, the United States Department of Agriculture, there are one in three mouthful of food that you put in your mouth is directly or indirectly associated with bees. The crops that bees pollinate produce $14 billion industry in this country. The honey alone is $130 million industry. Most of us who are backyard beekeepers are backyard beekeepers because we love the hobby, we love to watch the animal. It is an amazing society to think that it is probably the only socialized utopia on the planet because there is one queen, and she controls everything. All the workers follow exactly what they're supposed to do, and it is an amazing society. We go in there and we open up their hive, we don't bother them, they don't bother us. We extract their honey. You would think that if we would come into your home, into your kitchen, and take 60% or even 40% of the food out of your refrigerator and cupboards, do you think that you would not be upset about that? Bees are not, as long as you leave them plenty of food to make it through the winter. They're amazing creatures. They let you take their food and don't get aggravated with it. Also to let you know that some of the, according to the Georgia Department of Agriculture, that most of the beekeepers have a few hives, and they reside in all suburban and urban residential areas. And we want to let you know that as hobby beekeepers, we must register our hives with the Department of Agriculture. Dogs, on the other hand, are licensed by the city. So dog bites are one in, I think, 55 a year. Bees and stinging insects are one in 5.5 million. That's a pretty big, 50 people a year are struck by lightning, only 20 people a year are stung by bees. Thank you.
We'll now go to Bobby Joe Nelson, and after we hear from Bobby Joe, we'll go to Starla Nelson.
Good evening. I'm here today, I am the neighbor's directly on the other side of the fence of the bees the McDowell's have. I have never been stung, my husband has never been stung, my one-year-old son has never been stung, to the point where their hives are maybe six feet from the fence, a fence that my son has banged on. The bees don't bother us at all. I do not feel that this would be, shouldn't be, a community issue. I mean, they're not aggressive in our view in the five years whatsoever at all. Thank you.
We'll now go to Starla Nelson. Starla? And up next will be Susan Nolan.
Hello, I just wanted to say that I support the honeybee keeping in the residential area, and I am Bobby Nelson's sister, and I've been over at her home many times playing with my nephew and my very own daughter, and never once have they got stung, or myself got stung, or has been any issue, or been, actually really have ever seen the bees, to be honest. So that's why I wanted to say that I'm definitely here to support that, hopefully you guys can keep it to where they can keep their hobby, because hobbies are great. If we don't have hobbies, you know, what keeps us going, what keeps us alive and happy, you know? Thank you.
Susan Nolan, good evening.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be before, to be before the city council tonight, and I want to congratulate those of you who are newly elected. I'm always delighted to see that there are women serving on elected boards, so congratulations to you. I am surprised to be here tonight, as a matter of fact. I don't know anything about bees. In fact, a month ago, I went to the wannabe club with the idea that I would learn a little bit about bees, I've always been a little curious about bees. And what I saw at the wannabe bee club was about 60 people from all over western South Dakota who own hives. By the time I left the wannabe bee club, my bee mentor friend, Bob Tolman, came up to me and said, "If I got a deal for you, I can bring a hive over to your house." And I said, "Well, I don't know anything about bees, I got to talk to my husband, I live in a townhouse area, I couldn't have bees." So I went home and I talked to my husband, and we had quite a discussion about it, and he said, "No, I don't think you should have this hive, it's too dangerous." So I said, "Okay, I'll call Bob." I called Bob up, and I said, "Bob, you can bring that hive over." Well, Bob came over with the hive, and by the time he got through talking to us, and Bob can talk a lot about bees, we felt extremely comfortable about having this beehive under our deck. So the beehive's been there, Bob's come over and split the hive because it's thriving so much, and it comes and it goes. I start my day off with a cup of coffee down at the beehive, watching them come and go. The other night, our grandchildren were over, 10 years old, Bob came over with his smoker, we took out the frames, no bee suits on, he smoked the bees, kids looked at the beehives and the bees, and the questions kept coming and coming and coming. The neighborhood kids joined us. No one was stung. What this was, was a rich educational opportunity to learn something about these amazing little creatures that Tina has just alluded to, that propagate our crops, that come and they go, they fly a radius of a mile from my house, and they come back, and sometimes I think I can even see this pollen hanging from their little feet. They are amazing, but what they have done is created a rich opportunity for me to be very observant about what's happening, and to learn something and to share that knowledge with my grandkids. The one thing I absolutely don't want, any more than you do, is I don't want people in my community to be hurt by bees. But you know what? This is a city that allows people to own pit bulls. I don't have anything against pit bulls. It's legal to have a pit bull in Rapid City, but it's not to have bees. I think pit bulls are fine, it's the people who have pit bulls that cause the problem, not the pit bulls. So I don't want to make that an issue, but I do want to say that they're an integral part of our life, they create a more bountiful crop. They are harmless. And I would love it if you would reconsider this bee ordinance. If my bees cause a problem, let me know, I will move them somewhere else. I don't want to be a problem in my community, any more than any of these people do. So I ask you to really, really think about this bee ordinance, and write it in a way that is allowing these people, plus lots of other people, to have a very benign kind of insect in their neighborhood. Thank you for listening to me.
Our last speaker request form on this item is Joe Prince. Joe? Good evening, Joe.
Hi, good evening, city council, thank you for allowing me to speak. Here to speak in support of, really, I don't think there needs to be a new ordinance. I don't think we need limits placed on beekeeping. I'm a hobby beekeeper myself, I've been doing this for two years. Funny story, I've been stung, well, when we picked up our hive, the first one, we literally picked it up from Jerry, literally picked it up. And I was stung probably, and I'd never been stung by a bee before, so I was a little bit apprehensive about it, but I was stung probably seven, eight times by the bees that were defending their home from this giant thing that just came and picked it up and carried it across the landscape. I didn't, I was sore a little bit for two days, went away, no issues, no problems with anything. Bees, to me, they're part of our community. They live here, and they need beekeepers to help them stay alive. And we maintain them from disease and keep them healthy, and they provide us services, they provide us honey, all these things. And life doesn't come without any danger at all, there's danger in taking a shower every day. We can't legislate and protect us from all dangers that are out there. In this one, quite honestly, it's just so miniscule, it really doesn't warrant any more attention, is my opinion. Anticipate that you guys will come up with a reasonable solution, and hopefully it's something we can all live with and get through, but I just want to voice my support that, you know, we need to have, the bees need to be able to be here, and we need to come to a reasonable solution and keep that in mind. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll now go to item number 68, we have one speaker request form on item 68, which is an item from Sean Schram, appealing the denial by our chief of police of his requested taxi license. Mr. Schram, you're up. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for letting me have some of your time. I just wanted to appeal the chief's decision about my taxi license. I've lived here my whole entire life, I want to serve my community, my children are born here, my family's from here. He has some good points about my history, but it's been really good for a long time. I'd rather make some extra money for myself and my child than improve my life. And actually, all of the things they're talking about are a little more important, like the bees and all that, so, just thanks, thanks, everybody.
All right, we're going to go ahead and close public comment for items 66 through 68. Have I missed anybody? Public comment is now closed. We will now proceed to item number 66, we'll go to our legal and finance chairman Chad Lewis to read this item into the agenda for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 66 is a request by John and Chris McDowell to authorize amendment to zoning ordinance to allow hobby beekeeping in residential districts, and I make a motion to direct staff to work with, to work to amend the ordinance for allow hobby beekeeping. May I keep the floor, please?
Let's hold the applause, please, so we can have the council debate, so. We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Jerry Wright, and you're on the floor.
Thank you. When I originally voted on this, when it came before legal and finance, I was obviously had some concerns about hobby beekeeping, I still do, but however, I don't work for myself, I do work for the citizens, as was pointed out earlier. Obviously, a large number of my ward residents do care about this greatly, enough to show up in masks and to call and email a lot, and my job is definitely to represent the people, so I will be voting, I'm making that a motion.
We have a motion on the floor, and if it's okay with the secondary, I'd like to make a recommendation to the motion maker that you include a stay of enforcement in your motion if you and the secondary approve.
Of course.
Everyone understands the motion? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone, good discussion. Item number 67. Chad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 67 is a request by, anybody have, help me with that name?
Macariol Jean.
Macariol Jean, excuse me, for waiver of $120 fee for MXU Radio Read Box at 1112 North Maple Avenue, and I recommend, I make a motion to deny.
Motion by Lewis and a second by Laurenti to deny this item, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 68 is appeal from Sean Schram regarding taxi license, and we'll first go to our chief of police, Carl Jagerus. Good evening.
Good evening. I did meet with Mr. Schram just last Friday in my office, and we had a good conversation, and I can understand his reason for wanting to come forward to you, and I do sympathize with his desire to have an occupation, to earn a wage. But I feel that it is my obligation to recommend denial based on the circumstances of his application. There's several issues related to it. First off, when he applied for his initial taxi license, he included information that was incorrect on his application, including a, an expiration date of his driver's license, which he did not have. A check by our compliance officer indicated that he was revoked at the time of his license application. Further review indicated that he omitted a recent drug-related conviction, which is, which was in 2012. That was a class-one misdemeanor, a possession of marijuana issue. Additionally, if you look at his driving history, which I will point out does go back quite some time, it is very extensive and includes dangerous driving conduct, and I have four pages of that conduct, which includes a sentence of three days of jail time, which I will tell you is extremely rare in cases of minor traffic offenses, but that just tells you the degree of the offenses that were involved. In 2013, we did have contact with him from one of our officers on a traffic stop for a license plate violation, and at that time, he was driving under revocation, and we gave him a warning. He did not have a, he didn't have ID on him at the time, and our protocol under that circumstance would have been to take him into custody and arrest him and bring him down to the Pennington County Jail to have him booked in. And officers have discretion, and I'm not sure the reasoning behind the discretion, but he was given a warning at that time. So I feel like it's my obligation to make the recommendation to this council that he be denied. If you choose not to, I would just suggest that there really isn't much of a purpose of us doing a background investigation on license applications if that's the choice that you, that you went with.
Do we have a motion or discussion? We have a motion, we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the staff's recommendation, I'll move to deny.
Okay, we have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Laurenti to uphold the chief of police recommendation to deny. Any further discussion? Everyone understands the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're now on public hearing items 69 through 75. We do not have any speaker request forms except on item number 75, and what I would like to do is I would like to hear the presentation, have the council hear the presentation, and then we'll go to the speaker request forms that we have on item 75, I think that would be the most appropriate way to handle it, since some of the questions might be answered during the presentation. So we do not have any, any speaker request forms for 69 through 74, so we will now close public comment on 69 through 74. We are now on consent public hearing items 69 through 73. Do we have a motion or any items to be pulled for separate consideration? We have a motion by Scott, second by Wright, to approve 69 through 73 alcohol licenses. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on item 74, which is second reading of an ordinance, and we'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Would you read item 74 into the record for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 74 is second reading ordinance 5995, an ordinance amending section 1706 of the chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by the city of Rapid City for rezoning from a no-use district to general commercial districts for lots 1 and 2 of the Stamper subdivision generally described as being located 7045 and 7201 South US Highway 16, and I move to approve.
Motion by Nordstrom and a second by Scott for approval of items, item 74, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We've had a re- We've had a request for a recess, and I agree, and we're, we'll go into recess until eight o'clock. We're now in recess, and then we will come out and discuss, or come back and reconvene and discuss item number seventy-five, which is the Civic Center item. We're in recess. We are now back in session, and we'll go to the Civic Center item. I'll read this into the, into the record. This is an informational item. This is a presentation of recommendations for the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center Expansion Project. This is a joint presentation from representatives of the design team, the construction manager, and the finance committee. The presentation is for informational purposes only. Any vote by the city council tonight will be limited to the continuation of the item or requests for additional information and/or to schedule action for a future date. With that being said, we will now recognize our architect Donovan Broberg from Arc International. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. We're delighted to be here tonight, and on behalf of the design team, I'd like to introduce the team of people that are bringing forth our final recommendations for the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center Expansion Project. With me tonight are Stacy Jones with Crawford Architects. Stacy is from Down Under, but locally from Kansas City. And then also Jason Hopper with Mortenson Construction out of Minneapolis. Teammates with Mortenson are Jay Skoll Construction, Jim and Andy Skoll are both here in attendance tonight as well. And then as part of our expanded team presentation, we are utilizing Brian Maliski, former general manager of the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center, and deeply passionate person about this project and involved for many, many years. And then along the way, our, our design and construction team expanded to include the efforts, or the project, I should say, expanded to include the efforts of a special finance committee that was appointed by city leaders. And representing them tonight are our city finance officer Pauline Sumption and Pete Kappa. So we are very excited to be here this evening. We have been on a journey, we have had a great mission in front of us. That mission is to expand, enhance the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center to provide a state-of-the-art, nationally-renowned, multipurpose venue. And at this point, we, we have taken a lot of information. We have heard from a lot of people, we have vetted a number of ideas, and a lot, had a lot of good interaction. It's been a wonderful five-month process, but we've, we're really packing those things down, putting them into a box, and delivering them as a final set of recommendations to you in the, in the summary report. In the next few days, you will receive both the summary report in a, in an electronic document, as well as a expanded full technical report composing the full summary of our process and our recommendations. The process has been great. Over the last five months, we have learned a lot and gone down many roads in the process of reducing all the ideas and opportunities into these best set of recommendations. Really, this journey started about two years ago this week with a presentation of a vision concept. And then a foundation was continued to be laid by the Civic Center, their board, and many consultants after, in that process, to, to bring us to a point early this year of starting this process with our team to come forward with the best set of recommendations. These five months have been organized around five distinct monthly planning sessions that reached out to hundreds of people. At our last count, we were well over two hundred and fifty individuals that have been interactive and had input into our process. We have logged over fifty individual meetings with stakeholders, visionaries, interested public, and many, many city leaders. We have heard a lot of passion for a common value. And it has been a fun part to, to be a part of this and to guide this and to, to shape this, but this is really, truly a community effort, and there's been significant ideas shared and, and things that we've responded to that have made this a, a great set of recommendations. Some of the, the common values that come out are, remember our past vision, and please, please, cast that forward for our next generation. We heard that time and time again. Look to the future generations, not the ones that are being served now, but the ones that are going to be our leaders, the ones that are going to be our families here in the future. Also, continue to improve the quality of life that we have for our residents of Rapid City and the surrounding region. And finally, integrate a plan that builds and reinforces economic impact and development into our everyday lives. Along this path, I wanted to mention a few key individuals that we've had opportunity to meet with. By far, one of the funnest is, is meeting with Don Barnett, and before this, a few months ago, I only knew it as a name on an arena, but I've become to know, get to know that personality very well. Three or four months ago, I had a sit-down session with him for about four hours, where he invited himself into my office and showed me his plan for the future. It, it was really fun. Of course, that wasn't necessarily consistent with all our ideas that were emerging, but I, I heard a passion and I heard a history. I, I talked to him in detail about what he went through in the early seventies and for many years to get this, the original project going. It was very, he, he has a passion, and we followed that up with three or four more conversations over the ensuing months. The last conversation was this morning, when he called me out of the blue, I did not expect it, and he offered a, a full endorsement of the, the concept that we are recommending, and he is excited about it. The, the most inspirational group that I met was, is the youth of our community, and it's just great to see a group that's organized and, and passionate. I had opportunity to find through partnership Rapid City, they have many groups, one of those being for the younger generation, a group called Teen Up. And from that group of Teen Up, we, we heard from about a dozen young people, these are people too young to vote, but they had ideas and they were very organized. They worked to organize, what are the ideas coming forth from their generation and what do they want to see for their futures? And you will see several items that have come to fruition because of their input into As we have gone down this path, we have looked at providing solutions, really to three primary questions that were asked originally, and then a fourth that was added in regarding a finance plan. But first and foremost, provide a contemporary arena that facilitates events and opportunities for the next forty years. Building on that, the impetus for a lot of these, the project was, was the Don Barnett Arena and the issues that it had with code compliance and accessibility. And the, the term repurposing Don Barnett Arena was, was thrown out there. What are the best future uses? Do we tear it down? Do we add on? How can we repurpose the Don Barnett Arena for significant use in the future? And then lastly, one that we get very passionate about is improve the parking. We've heard many times over, please, please provide for the improved parking. And those are the questions we've set out to answer, and we have a full set of recommendations that have been shaped by our design team in response to great community input. And before we jump into the solution, we're going to lay a little bit of history and groundwork with Brian Maliski, former general manager of the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center.
Thank you, good evening. I guess I, being the old retired one, gets to talk about the history of the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center, which I absolutely, positively love to talk about the history of the Civic Center. I've spent many of my twenty years speaking with people who were an instrumental part of shaping the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center to being what it is today. It started back truly in nineteen seventy-one with Mayor Don Barnett, council president Larry Lidle, and many others, who knew that Rapid City needed something. At the time, the city auditorium, which was downtown, had been condemned and was being demolished. Rapid City needed something because Stevens High School at the time was not big enough to host the events that we needed to do. Nineteen seventy-two, they led an effort to bring forth a vote to Rapid City that was passed by a sixty-three percent positive measure that put in place two new forms of sales tax to actually build the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center. One was a one percent sales tax that paid for the bonding and has now grown into being what we call the CIP, one-half penny on the CIP, one-half penny on the Vision or 2012 fund. The second one was to put a BBB tax in place, bed, board, and booze tax in place, which helped with the operations of the Civic Center and is now shared with the CVB. By a sixty-three percent positive vote that was put into place, and the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center construction process began. The nice thing with that construction process is that one percent sales tax that was put in place to pay off the bonds actually generated enough money that early on, they paid the bonds off approximately six years early. And today, that one-half penny, which is a Vision Fund, and that one-half penny, which is a CIP Fund, generate approximately twenty-three million dollars a year, which is utilized by this council and this community. If you look at what we have done at the Civic Center over the last several decades, you will see something that is very, very systematic. The original Rushmore Plaza Civic Center is what we now call the Don Barnett Arena, the Theater, and La Croix Hall. That was constructed in the seventies, opened up June twenty-first, nineteen seventy-seven with Elvis Presley. In the nineteen eighties, they constructed the original Rushmore Hall. That opened up in nineteen eighty-six. In the nineteen nineties, specifically nineteen ninety-seven, they made a fifty percent addition on to Rushmore Hall, and they opened up the food court. In the two thousands, specifically two thousand and eight, we, we opened up the ICE Arena. November twenty-ninth, two thousand and eight, we had a sold-out hockey game for the Rapid City Rush. If you look at these dates and you look at these times, it's very systematic. Once a decade, the community steps back and says, okay, here's our main economic engine downtown. We need to do something for it to keep it viable and to keep it moving forward. If you look at that economic impact that the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center has on the community, one of the very first studies that the board of directors of the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center put in place was an economic impact study on the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center, on the community of Rapid City and the outline areas. This was done by AECom, which is the largest firm in the world that does this type of work. They have offices all over, not just the United States, but all over the world. They are truly experts in what they do. If you look at this chart that's before you, you will see that according to the AECom study, they picked the year 2020, and they said, what's going to be the economic impacts of the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center on the community of Rapid City and the outline areas if we do not do anything and just keep it the way it is? If you look down at that, you can see the red line, which represents the existing arena, the economic impact per year is approximately sixty million dollars. They also said, if we looked at building a fifteen-thousand-seat arena, what would be that economic impact on Rapid City and the surrounding community? You can see, based on a larger arena that can do more events, the economic impact would be a hundred and thirteen million dollars. That's a difference of about thirty-three million dollars. What we have done now is to take that information, extrapolate that forward, so you can see over the next twenty-five years, what would be the economic impact of that same larger facility or doing nothing. Again, if you look at that red line on the bottom, you can see maintaining the existing arena will actually go down to about thirty-one million. You need to remember that that, for that to happen, you still have to correct the Americans with Disability Act violations, you have to correct all the life safety issues, the fire code issues, the safe ingress, egress issues, you, you still have to fix those. They cannot be ignored. If you look at that top line, if you invest in a new fifteen-thousand-seat arena, the expected economic impact of the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center is two hundred and twelve million dollars. If you look at that two hundred and twelve million dollars and you compare that with thirty-one million dollars, you've got about a hundred and eighty million dollars difference on the yearly economic impact of the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center on this community. I think back to where this process started, when Mayor Quaker put together our first brainstorming committee back in November two thousand and eleven, and I think back to something that he has said several times since then, and I full-heartedly agree with. His point, to me, several times, is that the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center is the crown jewel of Rapid City. In my mind, it is our, not only the crown jewel, it is our community center, literally. It is where our community comes when there is trouble, like we've seen several years ago with the BRAC hearings, possibility of losing Ellsworth Air Force Base. It is where we come to celebrate our achievements, like graduations, state tournaments. It is the heart and the soul of Rapid City, the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center. Now, we've had some Americans speak. Now, we've had some Americans speak. I think it's a lot more interesting to listen to some Aussies speak, so Stacy's going to take over.
G'day. Some familiar faces. I beg for your indulgence once again. You're going to have to hear this and sit through this. For those that have seen this for the first time, I apologize if it's going to be a little bit quick and a little bit fast-paced. As Donovan mentioned, this is a summary report. A lot of work has gone into the proceedings getting to this point. We looked at different concepts. There were color schemes, red, green, and we've settled on blue, not because we're adverse to other colors, that was just a simple way of keeping track of the various schemes. We like this scheme. Makes a lot of sense. Makes sense for three key reasons. And Donovan and Brian both touched on these points already. But in creating a first-class facility, it makes a lot of sense to make use out of all the latent assets that we have in the existing convention center. Brian mentioned all the problems with the Don Barnett Arena. We can deal with those. And we don't have to spend seventy-odd million dollars to do that. We can sweep up all of those problems in one nice little bundle by repurposing the arena and making that footprint part of the new facility. In doing that, we also have another opportunity to do something unique. At the same time, getting a brand-new facility, fixing up Don Barnett, we'll have the first, we'll have the opportunity for the first time in this facility to do dual events, concurrent events, events happening at the same time. There's an opportunity to build what we've called a deployable wall. And if you follow the cursor, I'm just tracing that now roughly between the existing Don Barnett Arena, which we will repurpose, and the new facility heading to the west, there's going to be an operable wall that we'll be able to pull out from the side cabinets, a very large wall, and divide the facility into two, so that at those times when we want to have concurrent events, we could do that. We're also obviously dealing with a parking issue, and I know Donovan's going to talk a little bit about that further and later. The way that this is sited, we'll also have an opportunity for future parking expansion off to the, further off to the east of the existing or the new facility that we'll be creating. So there's a lot of good things that go along with this. But the most important thing about this facility, number one, is the immense flexibility that we'll have, that we didn't have before. I'm going to talk you through and walk you through and show you the pictures of all the variety of events that we can do, from small concerts through to the Black Hills Stock Show and Rodeo, to monster trucks and dirt bike racing, indoor football. For the first time, we'll be able to collectively snub our noses at Vermillion. We'll have our own indoor football facility. We didn't set out to build a stadium for football. It just happened that if we appropriated the footprint of the Don Barnett space and brought that into the arena facility, that we had enough area to do football. In talking with Brian and Tracy and others at the convention center, we learned that one of the problems with Don Barnett, apart from the fact that it's old and has ADA issues and code issues and fire issue violations, which are latent problems for any community, but it also doesn't meet industry standard. The ceiling height is too low. What we are looking for in arenas today of the type that we'd be building is at least seventy-five feet of clearance. Now, we add a little, another ten feet to that, make it eighty-five, then we have enough height to do indoor football. So for a minor premium over the cost of what ought to be done anyway, we have an immense opportunity to handle a facility function that we've never been able to do before, and certainly nothing in this part of the state and nothing in this region, really. So that's why football kind of reared its head as something that we should be looking at. Sorry, I'm going the wrong way. I'm from Down Under after all. Get things a bit mixed up. I'll just go through the three floors that exist in the facility. This is what we call the event floor, the very lowest floor level in the building where all the action is. And you have to have players if you want action. So all of the loading for the facility happens at the top of the page. The trucking, the truck marshaling, the goods in, the bump-in, bump-out, as we call it in the industry, where exhibitions are loaded in, where the stock would come in for the Stock Show and Rodeo, where the conventions would load in, where team buses would arrive. All happens on the, what's the north side of the facility. All the pale blue areas, what we call back of house, the darker blue areas are the public areas. So we have a concourse that surrounds two sides of the arena at the event level. The round circular element to the bottom left is the main entrance area into the arena. And from there, we disperse patrons upwards and outwards onto other levels via stairs, escalators, and elevators. We have a secondary entrance, a little further to the right, heading back to La Croix Hall, which allows us to load directly into the repurposed Barnett Arena for those times when there are two different events happening at the same time, when that wall that I described through the middle is in place. So that's a great facility and a great opportunity. Next level up is our concourse level, and we're now about fifteen feet in the air, higher than the event level. And from here, we access all this, what we call the seating bowl, the vomitories or the aisles that you walk through to get to the seats. This is where the patrons penetrate that space and get to their seats. It's also where you would use your restrooms and concessions. So they're distributed equally throughout the facility. And you see that the dark blue again is the public space, and we have a concourse that wraps all the way around the facility. So that means from any part of the arena, or the stadium, or the concert venue, I can get to any other part of the arena. Now, when of course there's a concert on or a basketball event, as it's signified here, the doors at the halfway point or the, where the wall is deployed would be closed, and of course you wouldn't be allowed to circulate around. But in the event of a larger event, as I mentioned, the Black Hills Stock Show and rodeo, or the football stadium event, or monster trucks, or an exhibition, then patrons will be able to circulate all the way around the facility. Then finally, at the very top, we have a premium level or a club level, which is dominated by fourteen or so suites, which then have a fantastic view down onto the sidelines of any event. In this instance, again, basketball, but they'd be great seats for a concert, of course, because the stage would be erected on the right-hand side behind the hoops on the eastern end of the court. So three levels. Brian mentioned the capacity at fifteen thousand. Of course, we are able to accommodate crowds from four thousand all the way up to fifteen thousand, but then of course in a pinch, when every now and again you perhaps get the RNC or the Democratic Congress to come and hold their convention here in town, or Hillary Clinton wants to come and do her book signings, or any, or other of your favorite authors, of course. When those events happen, of course, we can accommodate a lot more people on the floor, and that would be up to, say, nineteen thousand people or so. We didn't set out to make a nineteen-thousand-seat arena. We set out to make something that was around fourteen, fifteen thousand seats, and we've done that in a very compact, a very viable way. But because of the Don Barnett space, because of that floor space being contiguous with the rest of the arena, the new facility, we are able to accommodate that many people on the floor. But we can also do trade shows, because that floor has over a hundred thousand square feet of space, which is an amazing asset. Not many facilities in this region has anywhere near that kind of floor space for trade shows and exhibitions. So the sections, that's like, if you imagine a cut through the building, you can see on the top diagram is the long way through the building. The arena is set up on the left-hand side for basketball or a concert, but in this instance, basketball. The orange dashed area on the right-hand side is the existing Don Barnett Arena with the roof raised, pumped up to a super-high height, so that we can accommodate the football field through the space. And the two diagrams at the bottom, the one in the middle shows what it would look like if I was gazing down towards Don Barnett Arena and the football stadium setup. And of course, the same arrangement with basketball is at the bottom of that, where you can see the wall that's been deployed and drawn across between the two, between the, in the facility to create two discreet venues. So I'd like to go through the various arrangements. We have the ability to do multiple-team events. And here you can see it's set up for three courts, say for state high school championships or other regional championships. The Black Hills Stock Show and Rodeo, this is the ideal arrangement. Now, you've been doing a great job at Barnett Arena in hosting that event. This is an opportunity now to do it in even a bigger and a better way. We now have some two-hundred-and-fifty feet of dirt to operate that event, which is fantastic, something that you've never had before. So I can only imagine that this type of facility utilized in this way for this event is going to be even bigger and better than it has been in its history. There you see with the blue seats on the right-hand side fully retracted or pushed back into its nesting space in Don Barnett Arena, that's how we accommodate football. That's a full football arena, surface, if you will, so you have an indoor football stadium. Mortensen, I'm glad we've got them on the team, because as you may know, they're building a very similar facility for the Vikings right now in Minneapolis. Ours is much cheaper. This is a great diagram. This shows the event in two modes of configuration. On the left, you have a concert for ten thousand people set up. On the right hand, Brian's successor and staff could be setting up for a banquet that evening. So you could be doing an afternoon or an evening concert the day before, or the morning before, we could have done a banquet on the right-hand side. So that's really, with the wall in place, we can offer this to two different users of the facility. Or of course, if that was being set up for a convention, that could be a keynote address happening at three PM in the afternoon on the left, while Brian and Al are setting up for that evening's banquet on the right-hand side. He's never had, they've never had that type of flexibility before. And I got to say, no facility that comes to mind in this region has this type of flexibility either. So here's some interior views of what it would look like. I love this, because this would be arguably one of the cheapest seats in the house, and have a look at the great view you have of a basketball event. Unobstructed sightlines, total comfort, full fan amenities. This is now looking to the southwest out through the glazed wall. At times when we needed a total blackout, a curtain would be drawn, so you wouldn't have that daylight. But in times when a diffuse light is welcomed, trade shows, exhibitions, afternoon events, even basketball can have light come in, as long as there's no direct light streaming onto the court, it's a great opportunity to gaze out to the view beyond. And there is a view beyond. Column-free space, a significant span, and a very, very high volume, quite a majestic interior. Here you see it looking in the other direction with the deployable wall drawn across. On the other side, we could be setting up for that banquet I spoke about. Here you see it as a concert venue. We say various configurations, because the stage can push back to the east as far as we need it. It can slide on a virtual track, so we can go from seven thousand up to fourteen thousand seats for a concert. Here you see it in a large convention, that's the nineteen thousand seats that I mentioned. The vastness of the space is amazing, but of course, it's also useful for trade shows. A hundred thousand square feet, several hundred booths of trade show and exhibitions can set up on the floor of Barnett and the new facility. The Black Hills Stock Show that I mentioned, there it is in its ideal format, can seat twelve thousand people. Then of course, if we have to do the super-duper, what we call the Houston style, this would be the equivalent of the largest facility in the United States, if we wanted to use all of the flat floor space for a stock show. It's quite amazing. And of course, don't forget our monster truck fans and motocross fans, it could also be set up in that configuration as well. We have a full lower section of retractable seats. That's why we can go from a basketball arrangement out to football, out to conventions, and out to events like this. Another view of the football stadium with the seats, the lower seats retracted, we can fit that stadium in there. Looking in the other direction, we're looking now back into the Don Barnett space, where we have raised the roof to the obligatory mandatory height of eighty-five feet above the playing surface. Don't forget our soccer, mums and dads and kids. Lacrosse is a growing sport. I know my son's a huge fan, plays. It's a great game. I imagine it's very popular here as well. I wanted to chat a little bit about just where the design inspiration comes from as well. You've seen some interiors. We now want to focus a little bit on the outside of the building. The Black Hills has been a source of inspiration for me in the granite outcroppings, of course, the Badlands, the sedimentary deposits over millions and millions of years, and the erosion and the stratification and the horizontal banding has become a source of inspiration for me in particular, the design team in general. So I started to think about that and was drawing, as we do, and sketched the drawing at the top, which is my interpretation of what I've seen at the Badlands and what I've seen at the Black Hills, and how I can start to think about that in architectural terms to shape the outside look of the building. You can see the model in front of you on the little table directly in front of you is a scale model at quarter inch. That represents a portion of the facade of the building, how it could look. So that's an eighty-feet-long section of the facade. If you look closely, you can see the floor is intimated in there and the scale, people standing in there. So this is a very, very tall building. These buildings always are. They're very big. It's not a hospital, it's not a school, it's not an office building. It's a very, very big and immense building. So we need to make big, bold gestures, singular sweeps of hand to make these buildings legible and to read clearly and concisely. And I'm very interested in making a building that looks like it belongs here in Rapid City, looks like it belongs in this region of the Badlands and the Black Hills. I want your visitors, when they come to this convention center, to take away in their collective memories and understanding of where they were in the world, so that they can think about this place, tell their friends about it. You've got to go see this building. You have to go see this building. You have to have your convention there. I want doctors, other medical practitioners, people in industry to hold their conventions here, to think about this building and to think about it, because they went to the Badlands, they went to the Black Hills, and they saw those elements in this building. Their collective memory and the ambassadorial nature of this building will make it more successful, more memorable, and more legible in lots of people's minds than any other convention center in this region, and hopefully in the states and hopefully within the country. So I started to think about it in architectural terms. If I took those Black Hills and saw the granite vertically, or I took the Badlands and cut vertical cuts through it, how could I make a building out of that? And thought of the idea of the fins. And if I took each of those fins, as immense as they are, and some of those on the model are over eighty feet and eight feet in width, and turned those into architectural elements and created a facade out of that, if you look straight on, as some of you up there now looking straight onto the model can see clearly through the building, the fins are not an obstruction, but those like John and Richie and even Brad and Peps Meyer can look to the side, and you can see that actually it creates an enclosure. The building becomes opaque. It's sometimes very transparent, at other times opaque. And then as the sun moves across the building from different times of the day and different seasons, it does something totally different. So how does that make a building? Well, you can start to see the interior shots now define a volume. Now you see both the new facility on the left-hand side, the Barnett Arena, you can barely see on the extreme right-hand side in the back, and then the new roof is spanning over all of it. There's a new entry atrium that you see, that's the circular element at the bottom of the screen. The fins themselves then create this sinuous kind of wrap to the building, so that at eye level down below, it disguises and masks the bulk of the building behind and gives character to the building. If you want to see it from the other angle, this now is an elevated view from the northwest, which is also not quite this high, but certainly a prime entry point into the campus. Given the new interchange, it's going to be constructed further to the, a little further to the west. It starts to become a defining element for the building. So that's a taste of where we're at with the design. It's evolving. There's lots more work to be done to refine that and to perfect that and to get input from all those people that have a say and will want to say something. But for now, I would like to turn it over to the scintillating topic of car parking for Donovan to add his majesty in making a prosaic issue exciting. Thank you, Donovan. Good luck.
Thank you, Stacy. You know, we've answered, Stacy had opportunity to answer the first two questions of how to provide a new contemporary arena and how to repurpose the existing issues with the Don Barnett Arena. And the blue concept is really a very creative and unique solution. I do want to mention that the impetus, the foundation for this idea came from I do want to mention that the impetus, the foundation for this idea came from a public stakeholders meeting, and people were rolling up their sleeves and having input, and that was the genesis for this. So those ideas and how they solve those two questions have been very unique and a very creative solution and response. Everybody gets excited about those and they talk about that, the new arena or the repurposing for a moment or two, and then they turn their attention to parking. My gosh, we need to do parking. And then a half hour later or so, I try to get them turned on to the next subject. But continuously, the debate about parking and providing more parking and better parking and making it safer is in front of us. It's not a new subject. It's been around for the life of the Civic Center, I'm sure. Maybe the original facility in the seventies had enough parking with the parking to the west and the parking at Central. But as they expanded in the eighties and built a hotel, they started having issues and they had to add a parking area down here off of New York Street. A while later, as the ice arena got built, we displaced a little bit more parking and had more events, more people. And we built another parking lot here just in the last decade. And somewhere along the line, the Journey Museum was built and we share parking for events with their parking lot. But really, this facility continues to grow. It continues to respond to the things that we do in our community and more and more events and opportunities are placed within the facility to make those things happen. And we love to come to the facility and we'd like to park close. The existing or the current event parking, the Civic Center has 4,250 spaces available. And if we use a multiplier of 2.5 people per vehicle, which is very standard within our industry for events, we can accommodate about 10,625 people. That's ideal. But those parking assets are designated to those ones that are here within between Mount Rushmore Road, North Street, Fifth Street, bound by those, plus the ones at Central, plus the New York Street parking lots and the Journey. And those comprise our available parking at this time. As we embarked on this project, I decided to do, to begin to survey where people park and how they go about this. And during the stock show, my wife and I were gonna go to the rodeo on a Saturday night. And we knew that it would be pretty much a sold-out event and there'd be many other people looking for parking and such. And I said, "We're gonna try something new, okay? We're gonna go downtown and grab some dinner, and then we're gonna leave our car there and we're gonna, we're gonna walk from the downtown area to the event center." And I said, "Honey, I guarantee you, we will be there quicker than the most, the other available parking, which is five to six minutes away over in these parking lots or maybe on the far end of Central." And then she obliged, but she did remind me that it was 13 below zero. And, but I tell you, we've had a lot of input, both from my own understanding of where people are parking and other city input, both city leaders and city staff have encouraged us to look at the assets of parking in the downtown area. And especially that is available for events in the non-work hours. So obviously, parking in the downtown area is always a hot topic, especially for eight to five for five days a week. But in the evenings, it is available. And on that cold early February night, we parked right here and walked through the new promenade area and entered the facility. And yes, it was cold and I don't have anything I can do to change the weather and the environment, but I did find a parking spot that had no challenges, no competition, and walked swiftly and quickly and much faster than competing for a parking spot over here or over at Central. And then when we left, we were quick to get out. That has been the encouragement of the city leadership is to look at assets, including expanding the number of parking spaces available adjacent to the Civic Center. But we've set out to create or provide 6,000 spaces, make that many available. So obviously, that is an increase from the existing number that is currently available. But many of those assets, in addition to expanding and building parking garage on campus and making some more efficient uses of the adjacent spaces within, between Fifth Street and North Street and Mount Rushmore Road, we're able to garner 6,000 vehicle spaces. And when we, and that will provide for 15,000 people. Now that is definitely one of our more, most significant sized events. Most of our events will be smaller, but we do remind you that we have many times where we're doing multiple events, a hockey game and a banquet and a basketball game or some combination thereof. And we do know that it can often add up to that many people. And we want to be able to continue to grow the events that we do and provide for a significant number of people. Now, as Stacy mentioned on the Easter Sunday, when we might get beyond the 15,000 for, you know, a very infrequent large gathering, maybe it's Hillary Clinton with her books or some comparable thing, but we'd have to garner other assets and work with private parking, retail parking that does become available. We've also provided for future growth of expanding the parking garage, 1,400 spaces more. And we're working with a number of things, including increased, expanded drop-off area for buses and taxis, as well as working with trolleys and such to bring people to the campus. How do we do that on the campus? Here we have a campus plan and you see the blue scheme laid in there. I might add that one of the neat things about this is that we've created a very significant green space here in, on the west side between Mount Rushmore Road and the new facility. It sets back about 160 feet. That's about the same setback as Central High School is. And of course, they have a fair amount of paving in front. But I just mentioned it real quickly because this scheme started out way out here. And as we continued to make use of Don Barnett Arena and see how that became available to us, it kept pushing in and pushing into the east, and we've created a great amount of green space. We have a parking structure on the north side related to North Street and a number of ingresses into it. That will provide for 600 additional parking structures in the first phase, but it can also grow as needed to the east quite extensively for an additional 1,400 spaces. We've also shown other convention hall expansion in the future, knowing that we can continue to grow if the demand is there. That would provide for Rushmore Hall continuing on up here to the north and having an L-shaped continuous trade show area of about 200,000 total square feet. Beyond the expansion of the facility, we've also looked at many platforms for additional development and whether that's public development or some combination with private enterprise, it's all to be determined, but there is a demand for things like hotel expansion and actually having connected hotel rooms to the Civic Center. A goal of 500 rooms connected to the Civic Center is the goal. So a number of places for the existing hotel to expand and grow, alternate places for hotels as well that we're looking at, platforms for restaurant and retail. This entryway here, this is, comes from the youth. They desire a place that they can have common ground, a place where they can come and hang out. It's a cafe, it's a retail-type space. Also, we looked a lot and talked a lot about making this area a front porch to the park and integrating with the opportunities that Memorial Park has to offer and further connecting to the downtown. Number of ideas have been presented here and obviously, the costs are, have associated measures that we've explored along the way, and it's been a good team to have Mortenson Construction with us. And so Jason Hopper is gonna talk to us about the detailed costs of each of the components.
Good evening. I just wanted to take a few moments of your time to discuss some of the cost studies that we did as part of this effort over the past five or six months. I'm gonna talk about it in three different phases. And the first here is we decided to start and look at the existing asset of Don Barnett and understand if we were to build Don Barnett Arena today, what would that capital investment look like? And so on the chart, you can see in 1976, the $14 million investment, excuse me, in Don Barnett escalated over time throughout the decades, takes us to an approximate value of $59 million. The next line item down is relevant to the publicized ADA and life safety report that was assuming a $72 million investment in the facility just to get it to current standards. We have derated that by 25%, acknowledging that if those improvements were made at the time of initial construction, it would not take up the entire $72 million. And then the final number is the close to $5 million in improvements that have been accomplished over the past 15 years. So if we were to look at Don Barnett's, the existing Don Barnett, the cost of that in $2,014, close to $118 million. The second phase then was to assess the blue scheme as Stacy has presented and evaluate the cost of that. We looked at several comparable facilities in the region to understand this, also with historical knowledge of the cost of these types of facilities through other projects. And what you see on the screen, the first line there, the construction of the actual arena at $130 million, comparable to the $118 million that we just looked at for Don Barnett. So that gave us a good indicator that we were, we were in the right realm. $130 million for a close to 15,000-seat venue compared to the Don Barnett at close to 10,000 seats. You'll also see on here other site costs, some soft costs to pay for design and other fees, contingencies. You will see the Don Barnett repurposing. Important to note there that this repurposing is not relevant to the ADA or life safety upgrades. This is actually the demolition costs necessary to go into the existing Don Barnett footprint to make room for the new expansion as was presented, as well as to raise the roof on that facility. And then finally, the parking costs, close to $18 million in parking improvements for the 600 stalls, as well as the reconfiguration of some of the existing parking spots. Also important to note that all of these costs are anticipating a construction start of summer of 2015, approximately 12 months from now. So that was our benchmark for assessing escalation on the project. And finally, the third piece that we started to look at was once we had an understanding of the magnitude of the cost was to understand funding opportunities. As part of our study, the initial thing that we looked at was what are existing vehicles in place that could potentially be utilized for service on a bond repayment? And what you see here is a comparison of the Vision Fund relevant to the 30-year funding projection for $180 million bond. The bond repayment at a little bit over $10 million a year. The blue indicates the projection on the Vision Fund income at an annual growth rate of about 3.5%, which is pretty conservative considering the past history of that fund. And important to note also, the first year then of the bond repayment would be about 85% of that Vision Fund. Year five, you would drop that down to 70% and by year 10, it's only consuming about 60% of the actual available Vision Fund.
Thank you Jason. This is a good segue into the Finance Strategy Committee that has put together a number of ideas. It was about midway through our process that people started saying, "Well, okay, how are we going to fund this? How are we gonna pay for it? What are the vehicles? What are the methods, mechanisms?" And a committee was put together by your leadership and that committee was chaired by Pauline Sumption, and she and Pete Kappa are gonna present some ideas.
First of all, I apologize to Tom Gribbin from Doherty and Company. It's spelled wrong. I failed to get the correct spelling to Donovan's team. So committee members for this started off as Jerry Wright, Brian Maliski, myself, Lynda Raby and Michelle Lentz, Ben Snow, Don Frankenfeld, Jeff Bailey, and Dan Warren. And after the first meeting or two, a couple more people were recommended for the committee. They've been pretty instrumental in some of the brainstorming that we've done, and that's Tony Kleberg from Black Hills Corp., and then Pete Kappa, who is retired from Wells Fargo. And we met quite a few times and really, we sat down and did a lot of brainstorming. Pete will get into some of the other details of that. But a lot of ideas came from that group of people. And even though they're not going to be a recommended source of funding for this project, there's still ideas out there that we're looking at pursuing further to give the city other opportunities. So tonight on the agenda, earlier under consent, you gave me authorization to actually negotiate a contract with Doherty and Company so that they can act as our financial advisor. They've been very gracious up to this point where they've given me as much free advice as I can get from them. They do that a lot as, just because they're somebody that we work with quite frequently. And I know at one of the other meetings, I told you with the funding source of about 11.4 million for Vision, how much that could fund in a typical debt structure and that we're looking at about 146 million of construction costs that we're able to fund. And looking at our updated numbers and some other funding sources, we've worked with Doherty and Company, both Tom and Woody, on other opportunities that are out there. And so at this point, we're meeting tomorrow, and I'm kinda jumping ahead, but we're meeting tomorrow a little bit to discuss where we go from here as well. But we also talked about previously our constitutional debt limit, which I believe at the last time of the presentation, we had about an $89 million leeway on that. And so the discussions thus far have been looking at the annual appropriation lease, which would have no effect on our constitutional debt limit. There are certain debt instruments that allow you a little more flexibility than a traditional bond. One of those is this annual appropriation lease. Another one in which we, was our water bond, our $49.1 million water bond, in which we chose to charge a surcharge to the system users, and that also does not count against our debt limit that's constitutionally allowed. So from there, I'm gonna have Pete come up and talk from his perspective on the committee and the recommendations on that.
Thank you Pauline. Welcome everybody. First of all, as Donovan and Brian and others have stated tonight, we've got a really exciting opportunity here to really move forward for the next 40 years, just like our president arena has served us for the past 40 years. Our work is not done yet, as Pauline has stated. We've met for several months and brainstormed and thought of different ways of funding this. We've also thought about different financing options and vehicles. But that being said, throughout that whole process and throughout all the committee's involvement, we have really narrowed down to utilizing the Vision Funds. You know, this fund was originally set out to fund the original arena and has been utilized for that and now for other opportunities. And it was really the committee's feeling that we should bring that back and redesignate those funds for the upgrade of the arena. That being said, we are just getting into the financing costs and the project costs, knowing that we may need additional revenue sources. We've come up with corporate naming rights and sponsorships. We've come up with corporate naming rights and sponsorships, looked at the revenue that we could get off the Civic Center operations, as well as paid event parking. So, there'll be a number of sources yet to be determined on where the funding will all come from and what the total costs and needs are going to be, but we'll continue to work as a committee and bring a recommendation to you in the future.
I will tell you, as the finance officer, when I saw the price tag on the upgrades in the new arena, it started to worry me a little bit, but I rely heavily on Tom and Woody in a lot of instances. And in this case, I know Woody came out for presentation, and he heard the same price tag, and he assured me that there's mechanisms that he knows that can allow us to move forward with this project, if that is the wish of the council and the wish of this town. So, next up, again, we're going to meet with Tom and Woody tomorrow, start the negotiation process on getting them on as a financial advisor, and then we're going to start picking brains as to what's the best option, what's the best instruments to use. More than likely, it's not going to be a one-bond issue. There'll be multiple facets to it. There'll probably be some aspects that are taxable versus non-taxable that will always have an effect on your interest rates. And so, my goal is to actually have a contract for the council to look at at the next council meeting. That way, we can get them on board. The finance committee actually wants to meet with Tom and Woody at their earliest convenience to hear some of their ideas, and then also to let them hear some of ours. So, pretty excited about moving forward and working on this. It's probably one of those that will go down in the history for Rapid City as one of the biggest projects we do, and I'm very excited to be a part of it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Pauline and Pete. Ladies and gentlemen, we're wrapping up our presentation and our summary of our final recommendations for the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center expansion. This has been a great process, a great task, one that we haven't taken lightly, and it's absorbed a lot of energy, a lot of miles, a lot of conversations, a lot of chasing after good solutions. One of the groups of people that have been very, very in front of us all the time, not always on the same page as us, challenging us in great ways, but the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center Board of Directors have been very, very involved in this project, in this process, challenging us time after time to find the best set of solutions. Over the months, we have arrived at this scheme, the one we call the Blue Concept. It is unique. It takes the deficiencies of the Don Barnett Arena and turns them into great assets to basically leverage a new arena and turn it into a unique stadium, one that really doubles the abilities of our events and opportunities that we have for our future. And we bring that as our final set of recommendations, along with the opportunities of parking expansion, to you. We brought it to the board just recently, last week, and they voted 5-0 unanimously in support of the project, and we bring these recommendations now forward to you. Thank you, and we're available for questions.
Thank you, Donovan, and to the team for the excellent presentation. We'll first go to our City Council President, Jerry Wright.
I make a motion that we acknowledge this report and refer it to the July 16, 2014 Legal and Finance Committee.
We have a motion by Wright and a second by John Roberts to acknowledge the report and refer this to the July 16 Legal and Finance Committee meeting for update and further consideration. Any discussion on the motion? Oh, I'm sorry, thank you for the reminder. Brad, we do have a couple of speaker request forms. Jim Galvin still here?
Yeah, I'm still here.
All right.
Not dead yet.
Jim, you're up.
After sitting through this presentation, changed my mind on a couple of things. Just glad about 20-some years ago, I met a guy named Richie Nordstrom out here when we were both a lot younger, darker, and a lot less heavy. Anyway, that was down at the old Rushmore, Little Rushmore Rockin' Jim Show, Richie, if you remember. Okay, now folks, as you can tell, I'm disabled now. Been this way for more than 11 years, and for me, it's a one-way street. Just a matter of time before I'm in a wheelchair. Number one, on the Civic Center, over the years, main complaint I've had is, number one, there's never been enough places for a person like myself and others that are getting older and disabled to sit down, not enough benches. Number two, the one area that bugs me the most, and our current chief police, chief of police over there, I don't fault him or his people at all, because I've been going around, long as back as Tom Haney's, and that's handicapped parking at the Civic Center and other places around town. These guys got a lot of important things to do, and that means the handicapped parking's got to go on the back bench all the time. The last time I was at the Civic Center, gentlemen and ladies, was when they had the Shrine Circus last year, and I rode over there with my wife's people at the nursing home. While I was waiting for the buses to pick us up, I can watch right from that arena entrance, and there were five different cars with the blue badges hanging there, and some of those macho meatheads that got in those vehicles could have been on any football team in the country, and they got away with it, because these men are stretched thin. Other point is, I used to work at the Civic Center a while back, and one thing I have discovered, even in the big arena itself, places never got filled up, especially what you call your nosebleed session. And that included when Hank Williams Jr. was here in town. Now, one other point I'd like to make about parking, and this from Mr. Skull and his people. You're proposing to build quite a large parking area attached to the building. Am I correct? Well, years ago, before I was in this condition, there was, I can't even tell you the council person that had the meeting, about proposal to build additional parking on the place, and one of the areas was behind the hotel. And when you're going to build this parking attached to the unit itself, instead of like the Rosemont Horizon where you've got a causeway, the big question, you're going to have the support of a lot of concrete and steel and the vehicle weight themselves, and you're building in a river valley. Are you going to be doing with pilings or interlocking caissons? Because right now, the cost is going to get high, no matter what you do, whether it be the stadium itself or the parking. Years ago, before Bill Janklow got rid of the cement plant, the price of cement was a lot cheaper. Steel was cheaper, diesel was cheaper, and they had enough manpower to do the job.
Jim, if you could bring your comments to a close, please.
Yeah, like I'm saying here, I doubt very seriously I'll be going down there too much longer, because I just can't do it. I haven't been down there since that, and that's over, getting close on to two years now. My time is coming, and I know it, and that's going to be your problem. You've got 26 million baby boomers in this country coming along. You've got many moving out into this area, retiring, single, empty nesters, and you're going to have to start thinking heavily along that line. How are you going to handle them at that place and expect the crowds to come? You're going to have to get the city...
Jim, if you could please wrap up your comments.
All right.
Thank you.
You're going to have to get on the ball and make sure you can really advertise the city in order to get your people out here, because you've got a lot of competition across this country, period. Oh, and by my friend from Australia, you had any Fosters lately?
Thank you very much, Jim.
Okay. I got to get, I got to get on my radio to Australia.
Do you not have any additional speaker request forms at this time? If I, we had one from Carol Merwin, I don't think she's here anymore. Are there any other, anybody that I missed? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. We're back to the motion that is in front of the council. The motion, again, is to take this, is to acknowledge the report and to take this to the next Legal and Finance meeting, which is Wednesday, July 16, for further discussion and consideration. I'll go to Alderman Ron Waffenbach. Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it, and break the ice for me to get back in the swing of things here. I'm not sure exactly what this motion does by bringing it back to the, acknowledging the report means we can acknowledge the report, but to bring the report back to the Legal and Finance Committee, what are we trying to achieve with that, I guess?
I'll go to the motion maker for clarification.
It's an opportunity now, between now and then, Ron, for all the members of the council to discuss the project amongst themselves, with the project team, and we answer and discuss questions and concerns at that meeting on Legal and Finance.
I can go along with it, I guess, I just, I don't quite understand, but I have a multitude of questions, I mean, just obviously, multitude of questions. And so, I think that, so we're going to acknowledge the report, which I agree with, then we're going to move it to Legal and Finance for another conversation about the same report or...
Your questions mainly, your questions.
We'll bring my questions to the...
Legal and Finance would be a good time to do it. That's intent, further discussion.
That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I was just going to say, I think the intent to, obviously, people probably have questions. You've now had it laid out in front of you what the proposal is, but ultimately, it's going to be time to start discussing how you want to proceed, if you want to proceed, and that's making decisions. Doesn't have to be at the next committee meeting or the next council meeting, but I mean, that is the path I think that you're on at this point. But whether you get some of your questions answered before the meeting or during the meeting, now is time for, I guess, questions and decide how to proceed.
Any further discussion on the motion or questions? I'll go to Richie Nordstrom, Richie.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, to answer some of Ron's questions or Alderman Waffenbach's questions, is to make sure that the appropriate staff are going to be present, the appropriate consultants will be present for those opportunities to answer those questions.
Donovan, is that a fair question, that if this comes back next week, your team would be able to be present to answer questions?
Yes, we will. We'll be represented at the meeting.
Well, if there's no other questions, I have a question. And this question, I think, would be directed to Stacy Jones or to Donovan, and that is, is that I understand that this would have a wall that would go down the middle of it to allow for multiple events at the same time. Now, is it my understanding that you would be able to have multiple events at the same time, like two rock concerts, or would it be staging for multiple, or staging for one event while another event is going on? Could you help me out with that? And we'll go to Stacy Jones.
Yes, Mayor, just one rock concert. The wall that we would deploy would be quite thick, it would have extensive amount of sound The technical term is an STC rating, probably something approaching a 65, which is very, very high, but it's not enough to drown out or diminish a rock concert. However, if there were two events going on, and they both had reinforced sound that didn't amount to 110 decibels of a rock concert, but something more reasonable, it's quite appropriate, you wouldn't hear from either side. You wouldn't hear speech, for example, to speech makers or light music, or two addresses on public address would not be interfered with one another. So you could have concurrency of events. You could do a basketball event, for example, on one side, and certainly be setting up for another event on the other side. But the whole idea of the wall and not a curtain is so that you do have the sound attenuation between two events, so you could have multiple events, multiple setups, a single rock concert, but not, obviously, two very, very loud events at the same time. Does that kind of help? Yeah. The company that we would consult with is, there's a number of manufacturers of such walls. We would also have onboard our own structural engineer that would help us and the industry professionals work out how to support the wall, but there is a large trust that we're putting in place to take care of those loads. And of course, part of our design team would involve an acoustical engineer that was thoroughly experienced and versed in these matters as well, to advise the team on the appropriate measures to take with the design to ensure that we got maximum sound attenuation across both sides of the wall.
Very good. Any further discussion or questions? Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe my question would probably go to the gentleman from the construction side, Emma Mortenson. And I guess my question is, is I know that you have dollars built into this, like to build this, starting in about 12 months, but a delay, a project this size with inflation, what's going on and what we're experiencing in North Dakota and stuff, do you get any idea how much, you know, how much a month, a budget on a project like this is impacted when you wait? Just, I mean, just a question, just so I have...
Yeah, I would answer that with what we have seen on an annual basis. I don't have a monthly basis, but we have seen, just in the first six months of this year, over 3% of an average escalation nationally. So certainly, that's not regionally focused in this area, but from a national perspective, over 3%. That's what we have seen on an annual basis for probably the last three to five years. So we expect that to continue to grow as the market conditions continue to come back and increase.
Thank you.
We'll go to our council president, Jerry Wright.
To hopefully clarify some of the issues, especially to Ron, this motion in no ways is trying to stifle any discussion or questions whatsoever. It's just that we've received such a mountain of information tonight, and probably the first time some of you have seen it. If the motion is not adequate enough, I just, I know that we want to get this moving forward as soon as we possibly can, without delaying and costing us more money or in making a decision. So if there's maybe need a clarification on the motion to our attorney, but intent is that this would be acknowledged tonight as a report, and it would go to the Legal and Finance Committee for discussion and questions and clarification, and they would possibly prefer a motion to the full council, or may not. At that time, or they may defer it to a later meeting. Anyway, it's the beginning of the process of getting it to the committee and backing of the process with the council.
Joel, would you like to add to that? No? Okay. Any further discussion or questions on the motion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We're now in the bill list. We'll go to our...
Thank you.
Give our finance officer a chance to come back up to the dais. We have our bill list for July 7 of 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do actually have three additions to the bill list. First is to J&amp;J Asphalt Company for $7,118. Second, to Clifford and Kelly Foster. This is for the Seeger Drive H Lot and Easement that was approved earlier for $66,210.16. And the last one to Donald and Marcia Mae Gorman, again, for the Seeger Drive H Lot and Easement for $107,935.21, bringing the new grand total to $8,812,178.37.
Motion by Scott, second by Estes. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Nordstrom, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.